Okay, I'd like to welcome you to the March 26, 2007 City of Thousand Oaks Planning Commission Meeting. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Will the Secretary of Police call roll?
Commissioners Adam.
Here.
Commissioner Grumney.
Here.
Commissioner Lynn.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Chair Fisher.
Here.
Okay, we'll go to public comments. Members of the public are invited to address the commission on issues that are within the commission's purview and not on the agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. And I have one card for public comments. Mr. Kidway. Mr. Kidway, please state your name, city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes.
Planning Commissioners Nick Kidway, I begin in the name of God, who is most beneficial, most merciful, resident of Newberry Park. And last time I checked, in fact, director concerned citizen of Thousand Oaks since 93. And I was just thinking about it coming to the meeting. The birth of concerned citizens was due to one issue. It was basically Circuit City and the lack of information that the residents felt that the city had provided. At those, at that time, we used to have signs that were about 18 by 24 inches. And one of the innovations that we did and cities across the Southern California have done is we came up with a giant five-feet-by-10-feet sign. I don't know whatever the big sign that is. And I've complained about the sign a few years back, and nobody else has complained about it. That, and I was reflecting, in 93, we did really not, I don't know how many had internet, it existed but was not practical. There were no cell phones. You have so much garbage written there, excuse me for saying garbage, but there's so much information written on the sign that people drive by and cannot understand what it is. It's dangerous to stop and slow down. And so if you're really interested, you have to find a place to park and come close and see what the sign says. In fact, the wonderful staff, you know, was so zealous during the last campaign that they, the person took out all the city council candidates and even Congress and the signs because garage sales signs and all that are not allowed. But there is a sign that I see every day because I'll get off on Wento Park, a big sign for that center. And it has a garage sale red sign. I was going to take a picture but just so busy. Garage sale sign there for a month, I mean, on that planning commission thing. And you have this, I was going to use the overhead, but who has the time, this planning commission tentative agenda. Think maybe the title has even been changed because it's Planning Commission Tentative Agenda. It used to be all the, all the issues, development permits, planning permits, et cetera, that were pending. And it used to be five or six pages long. And then the so-called slow-growth movement in this city used that to scare the people because they came, took out a political campaign that went to the 15,000 voters with, in fact, one of the things that was on it was the same Wento Park from a Home Depot, kind of implying that all these hundreds of projects were going to be new projects and we are going to destroy the city. And so the reaction for the city has been, I guess, to not put anything up there. I drove by Wendy Drive, and on Newberry Road, I saw a sign for the redevelopment of that. I'm getting calls because of concerned citizens, I guess, as to, well, what is happening? When is Costco going to go up? I mean, I read about it, but I've had hardly any discussion in this chamber as to when Costco, what's happening with that. I heard, and one of the minority, I think the planning director talked about, came out being postponed, which is the Home Depot on Hampshire Road. But you don't have those things listed over here. If you go to the city of Ventura, go to Oxnard, I printed it, but it's at home, so I didn't have the time. But city of Ventura has 25 pages in their development permits. I mean, everything is listed. I mean, it's a PDF file. I hope the planning commissioners would download it. I have copied it. Go to the city of Ventura, they have 17 pages, all the details for any citizen. In fact, my humble request is to put something like this about planning issues right on the start page. Forget being all things to all people and have everything about the library and the arts and stuff like that. Maybe have them on second page, but this is what really the city wants and this is what is important to the people. And last but not least, since time is running out, I complain about using this hall because it costs so much money to run it. The boardroom is available, the city has spent another $100,000-plus, something like that, was on the consent calendar for the video conferencing and all that. It's really a waste of energy, waste of the resources to use such a big chamber, which is good enough for the traffic commission, as Commissioner Darryl Reynolds knows, and I hope we will consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Item number five, written comments, announcements, continuances. Mr. Town.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do not have any supplemental packets today nor other announcements or continuances.
Okay, well, the Secretary of Police call case 6A.
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item 6A regarding case appeal of RPMN 2006 70469. Appellant applicant Julian and Legia Garcia, request to appeal an administrative hearing decision which denied the request to allow the expansion of the left-side yard area to accommodate the construction of first and second floor addition to an existing one-story single-family dwelling. Location 2398 Gillingham Circle. Recommendation deny appeal.
Mr. Chang.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Fisher and members of the commissions. If you can turn your attention to the screen in front of you. And this project is located at 2398 Gillingham Circle. And the background for this project, actually, the project, this is project is appeal application to the planning commission. And originally, this project went to administrative process and was denied by the community development administrative hearing officers for the expansion of left-side yard area to accommodate a two-story additions. And one of the findings regarding this denial is condition number 20 of the RPD ADA-399, which requires all grading activity on this individual single-family lot to be limited on the immediate pad area. And what this proposed project is including a two-story addition, which includes first-floor approximately 719 square feet and second-floor addition of 249 square feet. And back in September 21, 2006, this application was filed requesting the expansion. And January 4 this year, the project was denied to the administrative hearing process. And on January 16, the project was, the applicant filed the appeal to the planning commission requesting the commission to reconsider the project and asking for the commission to approve the appeal, which approved the project. This, the subject location, which is at the corner of Gillingham Circle and Sanders Avenue. And basically, the addition will be toward, if you're looking at the picture, the addition will be toward the right-hand side area, which they would need to increase, actually cut into the slope, expanding the pad area to accommodate the two-story addition. And this is the existing front elevation of the house, and the proposed addition will be toward the left-hand side of this picture. You can see on the left-hand side, there's some type of patio cover, and that's where the existing pad stops. And the addition basically will need to increase that pad area to accommodate the two-story addition to the left-hand side of the picture. And this is a view from a street corner, and you can see existing, they have existing two, about two-feet-high retaining wall with a couple more-feet wrought iron on top of it. What the applicant is proposing to do is expanding that, cutting to the slope, expanding that pad area, so they have room to accommodate the addition. And one, a couple bases for the appellant's request, one of them is the appellant stating that condition number 20 plays an unfair restriction enjoyed by other property owners. And the second basis is this particular property, which is 2398 Gillingham Circle, is unique properties. What they mean by is that they have decent, they have a pretty steep slope, which is, it doesn't, the other neighbors, other property owners within the track don't have that, this particular slope. So what they're proposing to do will not, will not be enjoyed by other neighbors. And one-third of the basis is the denying of this request will give, will not give the appellant, appellant reasonable use of property. And what's the staff response regarding the appellant's request is that they are existing retaining walls and building paths throughout the track, but they're all done by the original builders or the developers, and they are not subsequently approved to the planning departments or approved as a modification. So what you see in the staff report as those pictures submitted by the appellant, those are done by the original builders. And the second response is regarding condition number 20. Basically, condition number 20 is a standard condition which applies to every single-family lot throughout that entire track and including all the corner lots discussing the staff report. And third response is regarding the design alternatives. The appellant do have other design alternatives, such as minus second-story addition or to add a single-story addition, but reconfigure the existing first level so will be more accommodable or more, so the appellant can enjoy a comfortable living space. Regarding staff recommendations, staff is recommending the commission to deny the appeal, basically deny the applications and upholding the community development department's decisions. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff's ready for any question.
Questions of staff? No. Oh, Commissioner Reynolds.
Good evening. I wanted to ask, I'm looking at page seven of the report, and it talks about the wall and the wrought iron fence. Has the applicant come in with lowering that fence? Or is it still standard, it will exceed our standards?
What the appellant's proposing to do is place six-foot-high retaining wall, and on top of it, they're planning to approximately two to three-feet wrought iron fence. Since they have a swimming pool in the backyard, they do need some type of security, building a safety requirement to make sure nobody will get into the swimming pools. And maybe the appellant can discuss the, what they propose to do about the height of retaining wall and also height of wrought iron fence and where they place to locate those fencing.
So they need at least a five-foot fence because of the swimming pool?
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions? No? Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And I have a card for Charles Blaugrind, who's speaking for the applicant. Come on up to the podium. Mr. Blaugrind, please state your name, city of residence for the record, and you have 15 minutes.
My name is Charles Blaugrind. I reside at 14994 Marquette Street, Moor Park, California. I am the project architect. I've been to the planning commission, well, first let me say, Mr. Chair and ladies and gentlemen of the commission, thank you for allowing us to present our case to you. I've presented two previous cases to you in the past. Each were one-story additions to one-story residences here in the city. And both were approved unanimously. And it was of the commission's opinion that there was a favorable stance on additions to one-story houses to maintain the scale of the existing home. And that's what we've tried to do with this project. I know it is a two-story addition technically, but the second story, limited to just over 200 square feet, is to just incorporate some attic space within the roof structure, but the proposed addition will not be higher than the existing residence. Tonight, we're here to request the approval of this appeal. The project does require a retaining wall on the slope of the existing property. Stafford, as he was describing the project, he mentioned to cut into the slope, but it's actually a retaining wall that would be placed on the slope and then expansion of the pad into that retaining wall. So we would not be cutting, we'd actually be doing a fill project. The, the scale of the project is to, or the intent of the project is to maintain the scale on this corner lot. In review of the existing properties along Sandhurst, which is common to this side of the property, there are examples, as per our photographs submitted, of many properties that have used retaining walls, even though the developer had done that technique. The retaining walls have all been used to expand or create buildable pad areas. In our project, we're not proposing to do a retaining wall as close to the property line or sidewalk as some of these other properties. And we believe that our, our proposed setback would be greater than the average of existing setbacks along Sandhurst. Also a part of this project, we would be maintaining a buffer zone of approximately 10 feet of landscaping to this retaining wall, our proposed retaining wall. And I believe the, the retaining wall and the expansion of the pad is really the specific element of this appeal and, and the denial that's been recommended, the expansion of this pad. When we presented our case to the hearing officer, we were given recommendations or opinions of the design of being good. The project was good, but the hearing officer did not have the authority to override this track condition that has been imposed on the, on the, the existing track. That track condition was, was a part of the track agreement in 1968, I believe, or 1989, I'm sorry. Then, the, the track developer had proposed all of his grading and all of his pad locations, therefore, to limit his construction to the project as a whole, I think it's sort of a generic requirement that the city imposed, okay, we're going to hold this plan as it is. All of your proposed pad elevations, pad sizes, retaining walls required were part of that proposal. But this lot is unique. The slope that's alongside of this property is not found within that track at all. All of the other slopes that have a distance similar to this property have all been either stepped up with multiple retaining walls or they just don't have the distance from the property line, side property line to the home. And if, if, if one was to do an analysis of lot width to lot pad or pad, lot width to pad width ratio, we, we did an examination of it, and we found that that ratio for our lot is about 75 percent, or, I'm sorry, 65 percent. But all the other lots along Sandhurst were running about 75 to the high 80 percent level. And that's where our argument falls as far as reasonable use of the property. We're not requesting anything that would be above and beyond what is currently being exercised within this track. Other lots in this development have used the retaining wall. I would, I would bring your attention to the photographs within our, our submittal, to the address of 2388 White Chapel Place and also 2360 Laurelwood Drive. Each of these have imposing wall structures along the side property line, and that is not our intent whatsoever. The streetscape impact that the staff has brought up within the report points out a different reality from our project to what is existing on, along Sandhurst Drive. I'd also like to point out that some of those walls were possibly created or built by the property owners after the development had, had been put out. I also think that in the development agreement, that those kinds of conditions were put into the agreement so that there was not an overdevelopment of each of these properties. Our intent is not to overdevelop this property at all. Again, we're trying to maintain the scale of the existing home. Staff has brought up the, other options of design that we have to add to this structure, and basically that's to go vertically. There are other two-story houses in this, in this development, but as we went around and noticed, most of the corner lots maintain a one-story scale home. Most of the other properties within the streets are two-story. So in closing, I would just request that you review our, our request. Some of the photographs, I think, are the telltale sign of what is existing and what we are requesting, and the uniqueness of this lot. The, the slope that is on this property is, is greater than any slope that is there existing now, and we're just trying to use a part of that slope to add to this residence. Thank you.
Questions of the applicant? Commissioner Lynn.
Good evening. I'm looking at the plans, and I had a question about the second floor addition. You indicated that it was going to be attic space, but the plan shows, or at least to me, that there's a game room indicated 10.6 by 18.6.
That's correct. It wasn't, it's, it's the attic space within the structure that would be used, not to imply that the attic space, maybe I used the wrong term, but it was just the roof structure that that second floor was going to occupy.
Okay, and there is a staircase that accesses that area, correct?
Yes, there would be.
Thank you.
Other questions of the applicant? Commissioner Reynolds.
Good evening. I was just curious, are the property owners requesting this, the original owners?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
No other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Blaugrind.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to our speaker cards. First speaker, Julian Garcia. Mr. Garcia, please state your name, city of residence, and you have five minutes.
My name is Julian Garcia, resident of Thousand Oaks at the subject property 2398 Gillingham Circle, 91362. And the reason we're appealing, as Mr. Blaugrind mentioned, was because in our original hearing, the previous hearing on January 4th, we really spent most of our time presenting how we had gone above and beyond to make this project harmonious for the rest of the neighborhood. And, and one of the things I explained as an architectural goal was that I wanted this to look like something that had been built originally, when the home was built, and something that would blend very well with, with not just this home but the other homes in the community. So everything was done to make sure things would match current home and the angles and symmetry of the house would be enhanced. Actually, house, I think, looks even better with the addition because it's actually symmetrical. And we, we kept all the slopes intact. And so the main goals were, well, we want to keep the 20-foot setback from the front, and we want to keep no higher than a six-foot retaining wall, and we have to do all topographical studies to make certain that that will be maintained. So the project as presented is basically one that achieves that, we think. And unfortunately, unfortunately, the last year, we spent most of our time presenting that and not really addressing the key point, which was the basis for the denial, which was the issues with the track and the slope. So what we're presenting now is, is new information that was not available at the time of the prior denial, and we hope it will be somewhat persuasive because we, we understand that driving by may not be as evident as would appear when one looks down using the satellite photographs. So using satellite photographs, you know, I won't bore you with the details, but we, your staff is welcome to review it and make their own survey, but we basically took the pad width to lot width for all the homes along Sandhurst, the corner homes, and there are other corner homes, but they're similar. And what we found was, and here I'm just summarizing, you can see, basically, we're at 65 percent pad width to lot width, and the other homes are from 75 all the way up to over 90 percent. So we feel that the current, what I would view as suboptimal grading, in terms of suboptimal for our purposes, obviously for the original design and project, it was optimal because they were able to put a home in there, the builder, and not have to spend the $50,000-plus to grade, you know, and put a six-foot retaining wall. And walls that they spent money putting in other lots so they can stick a home. But in ours, since it was basically a quarter acre, they did the minimum grading to allow placing a house, and that's what they did. You know, the types of homes they were putting there, like other homes like this one, they had wider pads, they put a larger footprint, like a third cargo garage or what have you. It was not worth the extra $5,000 premium to spend $40,000 or $50,000 on a larger retaining wall to achieve that. However, across the street, a house with the same slope that we have, on that house, they did put the four-foot retaining wall below and then another three-foot retaining wall mid-slope to achieve a pad that will allow them to put a, a, a house in there. So there are reasons why they did it. Economics nowadays are different. It's very difficult to move and find a one-story home. We have a special needs situation with our son and relatives, and I'm used for this addition is primarily of one-story addition. Second story is more of an afterthought. We thought, well, we're going to build this in the scale, the same steep roof that we have in the garage structure. We might as well use it for storage and for a game room or what have you occasionally. But our main purpose was one-story addition. Our current option, we can't go back, we don't have any space, we can go the other way, we're just six feet away. And forward, we'll block our front entrance and destroy the whole design of our, the floor plan of our house, because that's, we enter along the side straight into our living room. So we'd have to enter through a room in front and go down a long hall. So it would be, it would not be feasible to put a one-story addition. And second story is not what would work for us in terms of the purposes we need. So in summary, I hope that you all have been able to drive around and kind of assess the issue with the lot design, the size of the lot, the way our lot is undergraded in terms of usage of retaining wall as opposed to the other lots, particularly one across the street and others throughout the neighborhood. And I hope you will conclude that this particularly unique situation merits having the waiver, you know, waiver of that track condition proposed and accepted. And I would just hope that you all consider this carefully. There are not that many options nowadays, so I appreciate your, your time. Thank you.
Questions of the speaker? No? Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Linda Shannon. Next speaker, Linda Shannon. Please state your name, city of residence, and you have five minutes.
My name is Linda Shannon, and I live at 2405 Gillingham Circle in Thousand Oaks. To give you a perspective, I live kitty-cornered from Mr. Garcia. Thank you very much for allowing me to address the planning commission here this evening. One thing I want to bring up is the fact that a number of years ago, when these pads were set in their quote "size," you did this for a reason. You set a plan for this community, and you set a plan for the City of Thousand Oaks. I have lived in other parts of City of Thousand Oaks, as my family has since the seventies. I very much appreciate the fact that the city has planned its communities so wonderfully. We're not living on top of one another. We have homes that are kept within certain environments, and we have choices in this community. We can live in small homes, and we can live in very large homes. There are communities for each one of those types of residences, as there are apartment buildings and other types of developments, mobile homes, et cetera. When we chose to live in the community of Meadowwood, we knew what we were getting into. We knew what the houses were, we knew what the plans were ahead of time when we purchased the home. Like Mr. Garcia, I too am an original homeowner. Therefore, I knew what the opportunity was. When my husband and I had thought about moving a few years ago to big, to build a bigger home, we knew we couldn't do that, so we looked to a different part of the city in order to find a different piece of property that would accommodate a larger home. Unfortunately for us, that was, we weren't able to pan out financially on that, and we know that we will be living in this house with the size and the development and the way it is set. Would we like to do other things to our house? Certainly we would, but we know that our hands are constrained, and we have chosen to live within that environment. There are choices in our communities these days. If it's not financially feasible, I, you know, like it wasn't for us, then unfortunately that's the way it's going to be. But you set this community, and that's why we moved to this community. It's why my family has lived out here since the seventies, and I very much appreciate the fact that you have done all of that. If you allow these changes to go through, and you break with what your rules are, you will then set a precedent for the future, not only in this community, but in future communities, and it will also open you up to other communities, and will allow people to come forward and say, "I want change too. My percentages aren't the same as his percentages. I want exactly what he has." We need to learn to live within what we have and what we haven't got. If we need to move, then we need to move. If we have special needs, then we need to learn to accommodate those within the rules and follow the rules. That's why our community is as wonderful as it is, and why we have chosen to live I really think that if you make this change and you allow it, you're going to set a precedent, and it's not something that, you know, that's going to be pretty for the rest of the City of Thousand Oaks. Thank you very much.
Questions of the speaker? No? Thank you, Ms. Shannon. Last speaker card, Nick Kidway. Mr. Kidway, you'll have five minutes.
Nick Egbal-Kidway, resident of Niberry Park, director of conservation at the City of Thousand Oaks, and almost taking advantage of a free card, since I'm here anyway, to speak on this issue, which on a macro level is very important to our city. I think the speakers, in a way, hinted on the aspect that this piecemeal approach that the city has on remodels is really not in the best interest of anybody. It also puts the commissioners in a strange spot because you're not dealing with, quote unquote, "the big bad developers" and residents, or business interests versus residents, but two homeowners, or three or four homeowners. And as I spoke, and did not prevail on this issue at one of the previous hearings, of course, a man's house or a woman's house is his castle, and they should be able to do whatever they want, but we have come to realize that in a civilized, planned society, neighbors also have certain rights. And when these rights compete with the homeowner, who is to prevail? And that's why in a case, in cases where people are able to get signatures of neighbors is unfair, because the people who are really affected are the immediate neighbors in the front and the side and the back, primarily, and to get signatures or approvals from people who are two streets down is really begging the heart of the issue. And one of the issues that has really not been brought up over here, but it's really, is begging for the planning commission and the city, is the having an ordinance and rights for views, because previous city attorney said that you cannot really enforce anything like that, but I've heard the new attorneys talk about other cities having a view ordinance, and that is one of the main issues that keeps coming back and forth in these kind of cases. And it is also unfair because I spoke in favor of the Ludlows about twelve years ago in one of the remodels, and I still remember that hearing, and we were scared that it would open the floodgates of mansionization or change the whole character of the city and all that. But in that case, as in this case, the planning commission is being asked to make a decision based on subjective but very compelling emotional needs, that, well, I have a grandmother that needs to live with us, or we are going to have two children to, that are going to be born, and I need a computer room to do the work. But the issue with the house is that the house will remain for a hundred years, seventy-five years, and the family typically, let's say, lives in a house for ten years or something like that. Nobody, after the remodel, stops the homeowner from moving, and so the decision is emotionally made. When land use issues should really not be made based on these kind of situations, but we are human beings, and we are swayed by those arguments. And the problem that I see in the decision-making for the planning commission is that you really don't have clear-cut rules on these kind of issues, and the planning commission has basically become the arbiter between homeowners for these remodels, and the big issues are not being addressed. I was just in North Hollywood, and I looked at the homes, and they are small lots, and the frames that were being built right next to them was going to double their sizes. And the thing that the city has to really look at is that if the same thing is approved, and there are forty thousand structures in the city, and ten percent of them, or say, eight, nine thousand of them are remodeled, you are increasing density. And if you increase density, you're increasing traffic ultimately, and so you're changing the whole nature of the, of this, and that's why both these people are first-time homeowners, and people buy the homes based on what they perceive will be in the long-term interest. So these decisions need to be taken seriously. I appreciate the planning commission letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. I don't have any other speaker cards, so we'll go to staff for follow-up. Mr. Chang?
Staff would just like to comment on the, regarding the appellant's argument about the uniqueness of this, this subject lot. There are other corner properties that have slope adjacent to the street, as evidenced by the pictures in your staff reports. The slope varies from four feet high to eight feet highs, but there are other property that have slope adjacent to the streets. So the approval of this project will actually, first of all, one thing will be a precedent setting that could encourage other similar requests for other homeowners to expand their path for either additions, patio covers, or swimming pools to expand their enjoyable living areas. So that could be a one, one problem, it'll be a clear precedent setting. The second thing will be the addition, by placing addition adjacent to a street, the addition will be, appear a massive from a street corner, especially given the great difference between the building pad and street levels approximately eight feet high. Based on those two, and the third thing is, the appellant do have other alternatives to adding on the house. Given those factors, some staff is recommending the commission to deny this appeal.
Questions of staff? No questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Chang. We'll go back to the applicant, Mr. Blaugrind. You'll have five minutes. Again, state your name, city of residence.
My name is Charles Blaugrind. I reside in the City of Moore Park, California. In rebuttal, first I'll address staff's concern about existing homes with slopes. This property would still have a slope involved on its side of its property, or a side yard. Other slopes in the area have either one or multiple elevation of retaining walls within their slopes. I believe this was the only one that has a full slope with a very minor, too coarse, high retaining wall at the top of the slope that's on this property now. In rebuttal to the first speaker, change occurs all the time, especially in today's world, with the restrictions of land use in Ventura County now. I think pressure is on all of our cities that we have to begin to reevaluate the use of our land. The communities have been developed very, very nicely and beautiful, all the designs are well-done with the city's work with the developers. We're trying to stay within context of our development. I think the second speaker speaks of remodels. Remodeling is a term of, to use of taking existing space and changing that configuration. Our proposal is in addition to this property. I think this, pretty much, I don't want to waste any more of the council's time, I think it pretty much covers it, and I thank you for your time.
Questions? No? Thank you, Mr. Blaugrind. Okay, we will close the public hearing, go to commission discussion or motion. Commissioner Adam?
Yes, thank you, and thank you to the speakers for coming this evening. I can certainly appreciate Mr. Garcia's desire to expand his living space. As Mr. Kidway said, it's a trend in the community, and I understand that desire of yours. Also, I would say that the design that you put forth is well-thought-out and pleasing. However, unfortunately, that condition, condition number twenty, is pretty specific, you know, it states that you can't expand your pad size, and it applies to the entire tract, and I just think that granting you an exemption to that condition would be, in essence, granting a special privilege, and I think it could, in fact, encourage others to want that same treatment. I do think there are alternatives for you to your design, whether it be a second floor or reconfiguration of the first floor, and I also think that the existing retaining walls in, along Sandhurst were, in fact, put in by the developer and long before there were any subsequent changes, so I don't think that argument is valid. Sandhurst is kind of a unique street. If you stand at the bottom of Sandhurst and look up, it's, as you well know, it's a hill and you can see to the very end of the street, and right now, it's configured, in my opinion, quite nicely. There's adequate setbacks for all the homes along Sandhurst. It's pleasing to the eye as you gaze up the street. It's very straight. And I just, I think Mr. Chang was accurate when he stated that the whole intent of condition twenty is to prevent this massing, massive effect, and I'm just afraid that if your addition went in and your setback was decreased to twenty feet, and other homes thought, well, maybe we can move our retaining wall out a little bit and increase our pad size, I think there's a potential over time that you would see that massive effect up and down the street, and I think that was the very, the very situation that condition twenty wanted to prevent. So with that in mind, for myself, at any rate, I would, I wouldn't be able to support the appeal, and I think at this point, I could, in fact, make a motion that we would, that we would deny the appeal. I think the numbers are RPM and 2006-70469, and thus, we would be upholding the community development department's original decision to deny the application.
Comments to the motion? No comments? I'll add mine. I do agree with Commissioner Adam. I think once we start that process, the floodgates, you know, can and will open. That neighborhood was planned specifically, it's a gorgeous neighborhood, and expanding out to that side, you're just changing the whole character of that particular street, and we're going to see a domino effect. So with that, I will be supporting the motion. Commissioner Adam, any final comments?
No, no final comments.
Vote, please.
Motion passed, five-zero.
And there's a ten-day appeal period on this. Will the secretary please call case six B?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item six B regarding case RPMJ 2007-70025. Applicant Eric and Jennifer Rolfing, request to allow construction of a second-floor addition and balcony to an existing one-story single-family dwelling. Location, 2000 Campbell Avenue. Recommendation, approved with conditions.
Mr. Lynn?
Good evening, Chair Fisher and members of commission. For your consideration this evening, a second case, major modification to our RPD application has been filed requesting a second story with balcony addition to an existing one-story detached singles-family dwelling pursuant to previous major modification to this tract and RPD 75-137. An application which involves a second-story addition shall require planning commission approval. If I could direct your attention to the screen. Applicant Mr. and Mrs. Eric Jennifer Rolfing, locations at 2006 Campbell Avenue. Applicant's request is for a construction of a two-story addition with balcony to the rear to an existing one-story single-detached family home. The second-story addition consists of a bedroom, bathroom, office, and storage, and also a balcony to the rear. First-story mulling includes a new powder room and also interior remodeling. Again, the project location is at 2000 Campbell Avenue. This is the view of the north elevation, which is the front elevation. The view of the rear, side, rear yard area. This is the view of the rear elevation on the east side, which the proposed second-story addition would be above the, there's the wooden deck area above that window on the right side. This is the view of the side yard where the proposed addition would be. You'll notice that the neighbors is approximately about seven to eight feet higher than the applicant's pad area. Staff also in one of the conditions, added condition that there should be some sort of landscaping to, for neighbors' privacy concerns. This is a view of the front yard. The proposed addition would be above the garage area to the rear, behind the ridge, the roof ridge. The building design is a two-story addition with balcony. Condition does require color and materials to match existing. The total room addition is nine hundred square feet, which is a twenty-seven percent increase to the existing footprint. The nine hundred square feet consists of, the additional living area is five hundred seventy square feet, and also the remaining is a, a storage which is above the garage. It will not be visible from exterior. The maximum height of addition is limited to twenty-four feet. The maximum height of addition is limited to 24 feet high. A little bit background on the tract. The RPD 75-137 was approved by planning commission back in 1975 to allow construction of 20 single-family dwelling. At that time, condition number 29 of RPD 75-137 limited all residents in this tract to single-story. And that was to preserve the scenic vistas in the neighborhood, including views of the hillside area. However, major modification number six was filed on November 17, 1980, by an applicant at 2006 Campbell Avenue for a second-story addition. This proposed second-story addition was approved by planning commission back then with a new condition added to condition number 29 that rather than limiting it just to a single-story only, that a lot in the lower section of the tract may be approved for a second-story addition subject to processing an approval of a major modification, which is this application. Staff recommends approval based on recommendations, conditions detailed in the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff, available for any comments or questions. Thank you.
Questions? Commissioner Reynolds?
Good evening, Mr. Lynn. I wanted to know if the property owner has consented to condition numbers five and nine, the roofing material and the landscaping that you've added in?
It was a condition that was communicated to the applicant some time ago when the staff report was drafted. However, staff does not know if this condition is unconditionally approved by the applicant. Perhaps the applicant could answer that?
Maybe that's something I can ask. And I'm just curious, in this aerial map that we have, what is the project in the far bottom-right corner? What's behind this property up on the hill? I know they have a steep hill.
That is a custom home that's within the same tract on top of the hill. It was approved a little bit after the tract was approved. There are a total of, I think, three custom homes on top of the hill that was approved.
And what is that, a swimming pool then, or the green thing, or a covered area?
Yes, that does look like a swimming pool, although I can't confirm that for sure.
Thank you.
Commissioner Adam?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Lynn. On the eastern boundary of the property, on the left side, in between the Stewart's and the Rolfings, there's three mature trees there. You're familiar with those trees, are you not? You can see it in the photograph, actually. Left-side rear, left-side yard from the rear. Well, regardless, I just had one question. Would you say that those trees are providing a privacy buffer at this time? Existing trees that are there?
It's possible the existing trees may serve as a privacy buffer to the neighbor's property. However, the condition was placed to provide more landscaping should it, shall be needed to provide that privacy.
Oh, and more landscaping in addition to those three trees?
Yes. It'll need to be reviewed by the city's landscape architect.
I see. Okay. So the three trees would be an intrinsic part of the landscaping plan and what the staff is suggesting with condition nine, that you would landscape around those trees?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Lynn, in your review, you had mentioned an address on Campbell that was a, I don't know if it's a recent second-story addition or happened within the last 10 years. What was that address?
Was it the address that applied a major modification?
That may have been it, yes.
Okay. That would be 2006 Campbell Avenue. And that was approved back in 1980.
Okay, so 2006 Campbell Avenue was approved. Did they go ahead with the building of the second story?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Adam?
I'm sorry, I neglected to mention, I did visit the property and I spoke very briefly with Mr. Rolfing.
Okay, no other questions. We'll open the public hearing. Applicant Eric Rolfing. Mr. Rolfing, please state your name, city of residence, and you have 15 minutes.
Thank you. My name is Eric Rolfing. I'm applicant and architect for the project at 2000 Campbell Avenue, Thousand Oaks. First, I wanted to thank the commission and the staff for enabling me to present tonight, and particularly for enabling this project to be reviewed this evening. Although this project was initiated with the planning department in January, I was given a schedule of late April to have this reviewed. So I appreciate this being allowed to be substituted for an absence for a previous item. I have some images, if it would be helpful. If I could turn on this overhead, it might help explain some things. In light of the department's recommendation of this project, I'd like to limit, in the essence of time, my discussion at this point to the items possibly in dispute with the recommendations of the planning department. First of all, while we're working on the technical issue here, the trees that were mentioned just a moment ago, I think it might be a subject of debate as whether they are trees or not. I don't doubt that they're mature because the trunk caliper is probably three to six inches, closer to four-inch diameter. I suspect that those, that plant life is actually large shrubs. I don't, I can't confirm the species, but we can certainly track that down if that's an issue. I have no qualms with landscaping to promote privacy between the two properties. We're certainly in agreement to that. Or if it requires any extension of the fence to provide privacy, I think both parties, the neighbor and I, are ready to do so. And we'd be happy to work together to do that. Am I able to use this? Oh, okay. Is that reading correctly for you? I can't tell from here. Okay. My first item is item five, which I believe deals with the exterior materials. This home is approximately 30 years old. So materials haven't really been modified much during that time, some slight adjustments. So one of the major concerns are energy efficiency. The windows are, they're old, single-pane windows. The roofing is traditional composition shingle. The stucco has been recoded, I think, a few times. So it needs updating. And we're not happy with the appearance of the project. So we're proposing to put in high-efficiency windows. The roofing that was addressed earlier, we're looking to include a standing seam metal roof. That I can show you some more information on that. The coloring of the roof, if you were to take a look at if you can see that well. But the roofing will be in harmony with the natural colors of the environment. There's a, that's not showing very well. I also have a, if you'll permit me to pass it around, I have some color documents that you could look at. If I could take a moment to do that.
Go ahead and hand them to the secretary. She'll pass them out. Thank you.
I think the issue here is the materials being in harmony with the landscape and the neighborhood. As you'll see from the documents and the specification of the materials, that the colors will be warm, neutral tones that match the landscape. If you see the slice of the image of the landscape in the upper right is a local shot from Thousand Oaks. And in that photograph, you can see by the hills and the vegetation on the hills and the vegetation of the foreground that our colors for stucco, stone wainscote on the house, and roofing and trim colors are all within that realm and will complement the neighborhood. I think you'd be hard-pressed to look through that neighborhood and find a home that singly addresses those issues in a harmonious way such as that. And certainly, very few address the issue of the energy efficiency. Particularly, the roof that you asked of earlier is an energy star-rated roof. It's a cool roof, if you're familiar with that term. And I doubt there's any project on this, in the neighborhood that would meet those energy efficiency requirements. The other issue is the fireproofing. This steel roof would provide a degree of fireproofing that would be comparable to a tile roof, although the existing home, since it was built at that time in the 70s, was not designed to handle the weight of a tile roof. So I think this is a better alternative for those reasons. There's also the pollution reasons. Runoff off of asphalt roofs would contain toxic materials that would run into the ground system. This metal roof would be virtually inert, not providing any type of runoffs like that. So I'm asking the commission to reconsider the provision of number five, I believe it is, requiring that the materials be to match existing. If you compare the renderings and the material samples to what's existing there, I think you would agree. The next item would be item eight. I have one other document that diagrams the elevation issue to the east. As mentioned in the staff's description of the project, this site has a grade differential between our property and the neighbor to the east of seven feet, a little over, between seven and eight feet. So what I'm trying to illustrate by this diagram is that the floor level of our second story will be roughly equal to the floor level of the property to the east. The ridge lines will be roughly equal, and the eve heights will be roughly equal. And now, the issue of number eight is asking that some ornamental item be placed on the two-story wall to break up that facade. And in my years of design, I considered these options. And we've looked at dozens of different options for this home. This current design is what we feel is the most efficient and what suits our family's needs the best, and also suits the community's needs by not only providing the space we require, but it also sets the addition back from the front of the house at least 20 feet, which is completely different from nearly every second-story addition on Campbell Avenue. And this design would also conserve resources because we're utilizing existing foundations and the existing lines of the building. The garage, east side of the garage is actually, well, the portion of the addition facing east is actually set two feet back from the east edge of the garage currently. So there's currently a setback inherent in the design. And I don't see how adding a faux eve along the east side will enhance the project. So I'm open for questions on that. Let's see. There is one issue that hasn't been brought before the planning department or the commission, is on the south side, which is not in dispute, but you may be able to see in the rendering there. The eve on the south side is very minimal. It's a foot, maybe a foot and a half at the most. And for solar issues, we're proposing to extend that eve a minimal amount to provide better solar shading of the south windows because we're proposing to replace those windows and change some of the windows into full-height sliding doors. So I don't know if there's any means to consider that at this time, but I'm considering adding an extension to the south eve, at the south eve only, between the addition and the west end of the house. At this time, I will stop unless there's questions and address any further issues in rebuttal.
Questions of the applicant? No questions? Okay. Oh, Commissioner Lynn?
Good evening. On your two recommendations or your request for waiver on condition five and number eight, have you discussed that with the planning department prior to this evening?
I have. And I've also provided the color renderings that you have there.
Okay.
And I've also addressed that in a letter form to both Joey Lynn and, well, to planning staff.
Okay. Thank you.
I think on two different occasions.
No other questions? Thank you, Mr. Rolfing?
Thank you.
Okay, our last speaker, Raydy Stewart. Mr. Stewart, please state your name, city of residence, and you will have five minutes.
My name is Roddy Stewart. I live at 2006 Campbell, next to the applicant. Sorry, I didn't dress up. I just came from my baseball game, coaching the kids, so apologize. There's been a lot of interesting things said, and I have a lot of stuff that I, you know, I look at. The addition, you know, when we found this neighborhood, it's on Campbell Avenue. It's 13 semi-custom homes. And they're beautiful homes. And to tell you the truth, I didn't know about the street but my wife and everybody walked in and said, "Beautiful street," blah, blah. Okay. We live there now, and I understand when people walk through. It's a nice neighborhood. It's neat. It's an eclectic little, well, we talked about it earlier. With the neighborhood being, having some ambience to it. This addition that's proposed, when I look at it, it doesn't fit the metal, the standing seam roof, the rocks in the front. These are Cedar Side, you know, homes, you know, siding. They have some stucco. But they're all pretty much the same. When I moved in this house, I knew, hey, you know, yeah, this, my property has an addition over the garage. I'm not contesting that. But I'm not the original owner of that property. I've only lived there for four years. The concern that I have is, my addition sits, so if you look at the pictures, I think Joey's got some pictures of 2006 Campbell, where I reside. The property that I had, the addition, was built. It's over the end of, it's at the end of the street. It doesn't sit in anybody's backyard. Getting attacked. It doesn't look into anybody's backyard, which is my concern for It doesn't look into anybody's backyard, which is my concern for privacy, is the big concern that I have. The addition that's being proposed, the 900 square feet, if you look at my backyard, you can see the top, the eaves of this house right now. You can see the top ridge of this house. When this addition goes up, these trees, they're probably, I agree with Mr. Rolfing, they're probably more bushes than they are anything else. There is no real protection when this is built, because due to the height elevation that we have, now I come down and you're going to see -- you have to look down to see that property. Now I'm going to see it when I have it up. I have a couple of pictures to show what it's going to look like to me as the homeowner. The other concern that I have is he wants to put an addition for a balcony in the back of the property. If you want to grant the addition, I can understand that, but I would like to see if there are some modifications to eliminate that balcony. The reason I say that, the house sits back probably from my house due to setbacks, sits out another eight feet. So if I walk out my back door, his property, you can see the end of his eve's eight feet. He wants to extend the back of the house another six feet, which means it's 14 feet approximately. That would look directly into my master bedroom when you're on the balcony. That also looks directly in my pool. That looks directly into my backyard. Now, the balcony has people on it, issues, you know, parties, whatever, goes on, kids playing. That's fine, but that's going to affect me. The addition, when you're inside the house, you at least know they're inside the house in the two-story. It doesn't affect people coming out and visibly looking back into your property. So that's a concern that I have. And if I could see a modification on that, I'd like to see that. Also, the windows on the east side, if they could be obscure, I'd like to see that as well, to protect it. Anyway, I appreciate, you know. And also, he has another addition that he proposed, an addition on the Internet when I looked for a two-story that appeared to be more, I guess, susceptible or more beneficial to the neighborhood. So I -- this is the first one we saw. We haven't seen any other plans from him, any other additions. I know there's other ones. He does have another one on the Internet. I haven't seen the one that you have today. So I thank you for your time.
Questions of the Speaker? Commissioner Adam.
Evening, Mr. Stewart. The trees slash bushes, whatever they are, they look like trees to me. They had a trunk. So at any rate, they're right in between your property and Mr. Rolfing's. If Mr. Rolfing's addition was approved, would you prefer to see those trees continue to be there versus brand-new landscaping? I would estimate those trees are probably about 20 to 25 feet high.
They might be there. I'm not too sure. It wasn't well landscaped prior to him moving in. They've moved in there. I think they've been there for a year now. The people prior to that didn't maintain that yard, and they've been continuing to weed stuff out. My concern is now, you get all that stuff out, there's no natural landscaping left anymore. I'd like to -- so the trees are pretty much dead. They're not -- I wouldn't say they have any real good growth on them.
Well, I was speaking more from a privacy issue.
They don't give any privacy, no.
All right.
You can see. I have a couple of pictures from my backyard, if you'd like to see them.
Hmm.
But they don't -- they're not a -- they don't have a lot of foliage on them, in my opinion. They don't provide you with -- what I'm concerned with is the people looking back onto my property now, you know, in my backyard and...
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. I will go back to staff for follow-up.
In response to Mr. Rolfing's request and proposal to modify condition number five and number eight, and also extension of eve, regarding roofing materials, staff did review the material for that metal seam roof. And it's critical that at that time when the tract was approved, one of the review was that the dwellings is made of materials that would soften the visual impact to the green space behind it. It's been determined that the use of composition roof or tile roof is -- are materials that would be able to soften the hills behind it. However, a use of metal seam roof does not seem -- staff does not believe that it is a proper material, even if it's painted in earth tone color. For number eight, breaking up the walls, it's part of a PPE requirement that it discourages to have any type of two-story wall feel for a second-story addition. The best way to remedy that problem usually is a encouragement to recess the second-story addition or to provide some sort of materials to break up that wall. The proposed addition may not be intrusive to the streetscape. However, it is neighbors' concern that it is also a view that neighbors have to look at, too. Extension of eve, my understanding, if it's the extension toward the rear on the first-story roof eve, staff does not have any problems with that. Thank you.
Mr. Town.
Thank you, Chair Fisher. If I could just augment Mr. Lynn's comments as far as the roofing material goes, we had included the recommended condition to essentially complement the overall design of the project. And this is directly from your precise plan of design guidelines, where the intent is to match existing materials and colors in not only the project, but the immediate and surrounding residential dwellings. So that was one of our main concerns. It wasn't a concern, per se, with the material itself, but more, we wanted a design that would match the existing community. And therefore, we included condition. And in this context, I'm referring to condition number five.
Questions to staff? Commissioner Adam.
I may have missed this, Mr. Lynn, but perhaps you could explain to me again, the ornamental ban that would break up the two stories on the eastern side. What is the purpose for that, to eliminate a massive effect, or what?
Yeah, the recommendation for a ban or some sort of maybe a continuing of roof eve would eliminate the problem of visually looking into a two-story wall due to the proposed addition on the -- I think that would be on the east elevation.
Okay. And just one other quick question. How many windows on the second story are there? If you have that handy.
Yes, on the proposed -- if it's on the east-facing side.
Yeah. East-facing side, facing the stewards.
It's a total of two windows. One window to serve the bedroom, another window to serve the studio office.
Okay. Thanks.
Additional questions? Nope. Okay, we'll go back to the applicant, Mr. Rolfing. You'll have five minutes.
The east edge of the balcony that's proposed is actually set back currently in the design four feet from the furthermost east portion of the structure. The garage is the furthermost wall on the property, and the distance set back from that point to the edge of the balcony is four feet. So I think that's well within reason for setback to provide a balcony. The balcony primarily serves to view the south side of the project, which, as you can see from the landscape photographs, there's a nice hillside behind there and a beautiful view from the house to the hillside. And it also overlooks the pool. So that's really the intent of the balcony. And then getting to item number five, I feel that that issue is really a subjective issue. Anyone that looks at this is going to have different opinions on material colors, material And if we're going to compare this with the neighborhood, then you have to take a look at the neighborhood. In this neighborhood, there are homes with garage doors painted fire-engine orange with letters that are three and four feet high, and there's building numbers on homes that are in neon lights. So I don't see how this can be compared to that. I don't have images of that, but it's easy to see if you walk down Campbell Avenue. Number eight had to do with the two-story wall. I think we've addressed that pretty much, but there's one issue is we're proposing stone wainscot around the entire house. And on that eastern side, as you can see from the rendering, I'm proposing between the two lower windows to raise that stone up higher than normal. You know, that may or may not suit the Planning Department's issue, because I don't see that as an issue to begin with, but that's something else to consider. It's true, as I mentioned before, I've looked at dozens of different schemes for this project, and this is the one that I think suits our family and the community best. I'd like to point out that the image that you see on 2006 Campbell is the current addition that the neighbor doesn't dispute because it had been done before they'd moved in. But it sets a precedent -- well, I hope it doesn't set a precedent for the neighborhood, because that's a prime example of a two-story addition that has two-story walls at the furthermost extreme of the building footprint facing neighbors either to the north or to the east. I also have, when I began this approval process in January, I went to the neighbors with the set of plans to discuss it with them and to ask if they had any questions or concerns about this. And so I have signatures from the neighbors to the west and to the north and further to the east, but not the immediate neighbor at 2006 Campbell. So I can leave that here for the staff's record if that's helpful. Any questions?
Questions? No questions. Thank you, Mr. Rolfing.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing, go to Commission discussion and/or motion. Commissioner Reynolds.
Thank you. I wanted to start the discussion. I'm concerned about the steel roof fitting in, but then I look at 1973 Campbell, and it has your Mission Tile color or an orange-red color on it. And then there's Eichler House, as he mentioned, that's painted either Westlake colors or the Broncos colors, the garage door with the numbers on it. So -- but I'm real concerned about the steel roof fitting in the neighborhood. I could see the concrete tiles or the other tile roof. But as I said, I am concerned with that, so I have to go that I would really support condition number five. And I don't have any problem with the eve extension, and I don't have a problem with the balcony. I think that the landscaping in condition number nine will suffice with the privacy of the next-door neighbor. And as he said, the balcony is set in four feet, that I don't think that it's going to impact the neighbor as much. This is a very long lot, and I think that, other than the steel roof, that it's appropriate. I'll throw it out and make a motion at this time. I would approve RPM J2007-70025 with the conditions as proposed and findings per the staff report.
Comments to the motion? Commissioner Adam.
Yeah, I basically concur with Commissioner Reynolds. Although the roof may be a superior design, I don't think it fits in with the rest of the neighborhood. The rest of the neighborhood has asphalt shingles, and I think that you need to modify your roofing plan, so I would be in favor of number five. I was going to suggest we -- on those three trees slash bushes, I felt that that personally seemed to provide a good privacy buffer, but neither Mr. Stewart nor Mr. Rolfing seem particularly enamored of the trees. So I would say as far as number nine, just it would be up to the discretion of Mr. Rolfing and the city staff as to what they want to put in there. And I applaud the fact that you have solar on the roof. I think that's great. And yeah, I would support Commissioner Reynolds' motion.
Additional comments?
Motion passed, 5-0.
There's a 10-day appeal period. Go to item number seven, miscellaneous items, reports, and referrals.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May I direct the Commission's attention to page 56 of your packet? I would like to note that we are planning on canceling the meeting coming up on April 9th. We don't have any hearings scheduled for that evening. We do have cases that will be coming before you on April 23rd. And then also, if I could just make a comment in response to one made by Mr. Kidway earlier this evening in terms of this tentative agenda, we have many cases that are in preparation. Actually, at this very time, I'm reviewing the way that we are keeping track of all of our cases, and this is really the tip of the iceberg, so to speak. And you may be seeing a different system in terms of managing and tracking all the different cases that the Community Development Department is working on at this time. Also, I'd like to mention again that the municipal code amendment that the Commission considered and approved in terms of menu boards will be heard by the City Council on April 3rd. And that's all I had at this time. Thank you.
Okay, item number nine, minutes of March 12, 2007. Commissioner Lynn.
I move to approve the minutes of March 9, 2007. March 12, excuse me.
Vote, please.
Motion passed, 5-0.
Item number 10, AB 1234 reports. Guess I can start down at this side. Commissioner Reynolds.
Thank you. I'm glad that Mr. Town clarified about Mr. Kidway's questions. We do get an activity report. It's in our packet occasionally, and it's something I always save. I attended the League of California Cities Planning Institute last week and the conference and found it interesting and beneficial as usual. I especially enjoy hearing William Fulton. He's from the City of Ventura, a council member, and he's written several books. And also Lynn Jacobs, who's the Director of the Department of Housing and Community Development for the State of California. I also enjoyed getting to know staff and my fellow commissioners and look forward to the next California League of Cities meeting.
Commissioner Lynn.
Thank you, Chair Fisher. I also attended the planning conference, day one only. I was fortunate enough to make it down there. Schedule precluded me from attending other sessions and found it to be interesting.
And I, too, attended the same conference and, like Commissioner Reynolds, enjoyed Mr. Fulton's presentation and also a great presentation on parking as well. So always learning something different when we go to these. Commissioner Adam.
Yes, I was at the Planters Institute in San Diego as well. Very interesting topics in regard to the parking. That was especially interesting lecture. For example, did you know that 95% of the parking -- or the traffic in Westwood is people driving around looking for a free parking space? But I enjoyed it very much, and as Commissioner Reynolds say, I think the best part was -- But I enjoyed it very much, and as, as Commissioner Reynolds says, I think the best part was being able to get to know staff better and my fellow commissioners, so I'm happy to be there.
Commissioner Grumley, any? Okay. We will go to commission comments. Commissioner Lynn.
Thank you, Chair Fisher. I just wanted to add to Commissioner Reynolds and Mr. Town's comments in regards to the agenda and the format of the agenda, I find it to be very informative, and I think that we shouldn't lose track of the fact that the earlier speaker didn't take into consideration the fact that this is a tentative agenda that's including in the packet. However, we are provided with the numbers of, of projects that are in the works and are going to eventually come before this commission, and I think that the, the present way that we're doing it, at least from my chair, is very effective, and I'd like it to continue.
Any other comments? No. Okay, we will adjourn to 6:30 PM on April 23, 2007.